And just waiting for names to populate on the side for the attendees. Terrific, I think we're set, ready to go. Great, thank you so much Kim. Good evening, everybody. Welcome. So nice to see everyone. Tonight is Thursday, March 25th, 2021, and it's my pleasure to make a motion for us to return to public session. If I could please have a second, thank you, Julia. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Terrific, six zero, and welcome to members of our community, joined us this evening. Would you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thanks very much. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance.
To the flag.
To the flag of the United States.
States of America. And to the Republic.
For which stands one nation under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice.
For all.
Great, thank you. Tonight, the board is looking forward to another opportunity to review the superintendent's proposed budget and to vote on a resolution to adopt the budget and to make it the Board of Education's budget. And before we turn our attention to that, I will just pause briefly for any board announcements. If we don't have individual announcements, then on behalf of the board, please allow us just to begin with an expression of gratitude for all of the work that continues to occur behind the scenes and for all of the communication from our building leaders to our community regarding contingencies and changes from the CDC and new guidance and how we are preparing to more fully reopen our schools. We know that this is an enormous undertaking and that we're just completely grateful and thankful for the partnership that we have with our staff, with our community, and with everybody here at the table tonight. So we thank you so much for all that you're doing and we very much look forward to hearing from you about how everything is unfolding. And I'll turn it over to you for that, please, Andrew.
Thank you, Marjorie. Thanks, everybody. So just a few updates tonight. I want to start by celebrating our elementary schools this week that have been, or this month, that have been celebrating park, pick a reading partner celebration of reading month. If you haven't seen any of the images there on social media, there'll be more in our newsletter that should go out to our families tomorrow. It's been a celebratory time with costumes and pajamas and lots of read, most important, lots and lots of reading together, which is great. And it's been fun to see all those pictures. Congratulations to nine of our seniors here at John Jay High School who had their work recognized at last week's Westchester Science and Engineering Fair. And a big thank you to Emery Lipinski and Linda Burke for all of their support of this program. As Marjorie just said, I also want to give a big thanks to our principals and all of our building administrators who've been holding reopening webinars for the last week and giving lots and lots of information to our families so that they can make the decisions that are best for them as we move towards reopening. Starting, we hope, fingers crossed, on April 12th and continuing through that week and then on April 19th with hopefully at that point, all of our students back. A huge thank you actually to our operations and maintenance staff who were doing just a tremendous amount of work behind the scenes. It was really nice to even walk here to the library tonight and see a lot more desks filling the rooms, getting ready for the students to return. There's a lot of work going on to get everything set. We are, we are still awaiting the first shipment of those barriers, but they are, we are told they're in the mail and will be arriving soon. So we're still hope to be on track for that. Thanks also to all the families who submitted those change requests through, through the surveys this week. That survey closes tonight just for our high school families who had their information session last night. And I did want to mention, we've had a few calls and questions from families who keep checking the campus parent portal to see if their child's assignment has changed. You, you won't see a change there. So just know, or at least not, not immediately. So just know that we are logging all of the changes that are coming in through the surveys and making those changes there. The, the purpose of that, it's a fixed document in the campus parent, which was there to show you what was there so that we could know if you needed to make a change or not. It's not the type of system that updates itself. Marjorie mentioned the CDC guidance, so I just wanted to touch on that briefly. There were a lot of announcements last Friday and a lot of press coverage when CDC did make adjustments. There were some pretty large headlines about six feet being reduced to three feet in CDC guidance. Important always to remember that we've, we are obligated to follow the New York State guidance. And New York State so far hasn't changed anything since last Friday in relation to the CDC guidance. So we're still following the same protocols. The, the New York State guidance has always allowed for less than six feet of distance, but does require those barriers in order to be at less than six feet. So that's why they're still on their way at this point. I suppose that may change at some point, but we're not waiting to see if it does. We're moving ahead and feel that we're doing doing what's best for our students as we move forward. Another, another quick mention of the New York State Travel Advisory, since we're just about into a vacation period here, I sent out a message to the community, I think, earlier this week or last week, just to remind everybody again, there is still a travel advisory in effect for New York State. If you do travel to a state that's not one of the contiguous states with New York, there's still a required quarantine period. There are now exemptions for those who are fully vaccinated. There are exemptions for those who've tested positive for COVID within a certain timeframe. And there's talk of a change on April 1st so that there will no longer be the need to quarantine upon travel. The governor's made that announcement. You can actually read it on the state's website. But the travel advisory itself hasn't yet been updated. So we just continue to advise people that that, that continues to be the state's regulation as we understand it until it, until it changes. So, and we've been asked several times, will we enforce the travel advisory? It's really not up to the school district to enforce it or not. That's a state piece of guidance and a state regulation. There's a form that travelers are required to fill out and the quarantine is based on filling that out. So you know, it does, it does seem fairly likely that it will change by April 1st there, since you can read it on the state website, but I think it's just better to be safe and not get yourself stuck if you don't want to be stuck somewhere in a quarantine. So keep checking those websites. We've mentioned here before, I'll just say it one more time again tonight, the, some information about the state tests. When we, I think when we return from the break, families will be getting more information from us soon after that about the three through eight tests. They, just in case anyone hasn't heard, the state did attempt to get a waiver from the federal government so that it would not have to administer the three through eight tests this year, but that waiver was not approved entirely. And so the three through eight test, although they've been reduced in size so that there's now just, I think, one section for each test rather than two sections, that school districts are still required to administer them. The timing is really unfortunate in that we are just about to return all of our students to school full time. And pretty soon after that occurs, there'll be a testing period. We will provide information to our families. We can't, we can't say, if we haven't said this in the past, there's no online version of these tests. So if a student's not in school, they won't be taking them. There's, there's no, there's no accommodation that the state has made for students who are staying home. And there's no, there's no, there's no harm created by staying home and not taking the test. So it'll be particularly important to us this year to know which students intend to take the test or not because of COVID, because of all the space and supervisory logistics that we have to go through to keep everybody safe. It'll be that much more important for us to know who is and who isn't going to take the test. As we've said before, we're going to do everything we can to minimize their impact. We really want to focus on teaching and learning when our students come back and to celebrate the joy of being back in the classroom and be involved in teaching and learning. So we won't, we won't belabor the preparation for the test. We will, you know, give them as necessary, but otherwise focus on teaching and learning. So our families can expect to get more communication as soon as we're back. And we'll be asking you, I think, at that point to let us know your intentions. Coming to the end, as I said, we're verging on a holiday week, a number of different holidays being celebrated next week. So we wish happy holidays to all of those who are celebrating and to everybody else. Have a good and restful break. You might remember it was this break last year when Governor Cuomo actually ordered the continuation of instruction, the remote instruction through the spring break so that everybody would stay in their homes as we were dealing with those earlier stages of the pandemic. So it's, it's nice that we have come a long way since then. We do still have a ways to go. So continue to be vigilant and take every precaution, but please enjoy the holiday. We, with, with a bit of luck, when you, when students come back on the fifth, we may see our tents, the tents that we purchased, we hope will be up when students return. If all goes according to plan, and we'll be able to start making use of those with the better weather as the spring continues. And that's it for tonight.
That's terrific. Thank you very much. We really appreciate the overview of how things are evolving. It may be too soon to answer this question because I know the deadline for responding to your learning preference for the rest of the year was just as recently as I think yesterday for high school population, but to the extent that you are able to characterize what you're seeing or what we can anticipate, are families making decisions that are consistent with the information that was provided to you through the survey that you administered in order to determine that we were going to move forward with more in-person learning?
Yeah, pretty, pretty consistent, I think. It does, it does vary, I think, a little bit by, by level as we kind of thought it might. So I think we'll continue to see a higher percentage of students in person in the younger grades and a little bit less so as the students get older. But still on the whole, we're not actually seeing huge numbers of change requests. So students who were registered to either be in the hybrid model and moved to in-person are kind of staying that way. And, and the numbers that are currently remote are going to shift a little bit, but not a huge amount. So from the looks of things, so still working through some of the logistics in that. And, and actually, why, since you asked, the logistics, this is good for families to be aware are most complicated at the elementary schools. And that's why those deadlines were really important because we, that, that's where we have those entirely in-person sections and we have the entirely remote sections. And so as you can imagine, as shifts happen between those, if we needed to move a teacher and create a different section, we would want to do that as early and as quickly as possible to, in order to be prepared to do it well and to notify families and that sort of thing. And not be caught by surprise and have to make an adjustment suddenly. So it's, it's a bigger logistical challenge probably at the elementary schools than any other than in the secondary schools, but, but the data is important to us throughout. So we really appreciate everybody getting back to us.
Thank you for providing that insight. And if you don't feel comfortable going further, then please don't feel you have to, but if, if you're ready to and able to, can you comment on whether the information that you're seeing at the elementary level will have an impact on staffing? I know that at one point, you know, that was a possibility, depending on how many families decided to go fully virtual, because we have those fully virtual sections staffed by individual teachers. Are you anticipating, you know, some disruption, no disruption, a lot of disruption? Can you characterize?
Yeah, I, I don't think it'll be a lot of disruption. You know, we did, we sat with our elementary principals this week. There were, there were a few places where the decisions were a little bit tricky to know. You know, should we make a change here that might impact a number of students? Or should we perhaps let, let a class size grow a little bit? So, so that, that's the dilemma actually. So for people to understand, it's, do you let a class get a little bit larger, which may have less impact in terms of students changing their teacher? Or do you make an adjustment in order to balance class sizes out again? But in doing so, create more changes for individual students and teachers. So it's a, it was a tricky discussion. In the end, I don't think the changes are dramatic. And I think it's fair to say, and my colleagues will correct me if I'm wrong, I think at the elementary schools, we're seeing a little bit of an increase in in-person attendance and a little bit of a decrease in the fully remote sections overall. But there will still be fully remote sections at every grade level as there are currently. It didn't, it wasn't that dramatic that any of them went away entirely.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate hearing how that's unfolding. Are there any other clarifying questions or comments for Andrew before we move on to the budget overview? Okay. Well then, thank you again. We really appreciate all that you're doing to help us move forward in this next phase. And for any community members who might be waiting to ask a question or ask a comment, I'll just provide a reminder that after our next discussion around the proposed budget and after our opportunity to vote on a couple of resolutions related to the budget and the bus proposition, then we will turn our attention to public forums. So please feel free to share thoughts and comments and Q and A. At that time, we just asked that you please identify yourself and let us know where you live in the district. And with that, I think we are ready to turn it over to Denell and Andrew. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So I'll share my screen and you're going to see some very familiar slides. And I'm going to move and at Denell and Alice and I will each touch on some of the slides. But we're going to move fairly quickly through the slides because there's really no new information here for our board. You've seen these slides before and you've heard the information before, and you will be seeing them again. Borrowing anything unforeseen in May, when we have to do the budget hearing within that timeframe of the budget vote. So here we go. We begin with our learning commitment that we hope everyone is familiar with. We create an engaging work to create an engaging, relevant and active learning environment. We put the board's goals first and foremost, because we do build our budget with the board's goals in mind, particularly with goal number two, the fiscal stewardship goal. And we're pleased to have been able to meet the, this goal in terms of developing a budget that is within the tax cap for next year. Here's the timeline. We always talk about budgeting being a pretty much a year-round process. And so we work through very thoroughly and are always thankful to all of the members of our team, from teachers to administrators, as well as central office staff who worked through to get us to this point. We touched on the enrollment when we, when we shared this slide. This year, we made this, we made a little bit of a highlight here of the fact that what was, what was a decline over about a 10-year period has really seen a much more of a leveling off in the last four or five years. You know, what happens from here yet to be seen, but we do think it, it's fairly significant to see that kind of flattening out. And so we've moved from there to showing the actual numbers. The, the budget that we are, our current budget there at the top, the 111 million, 472,000, and then the posed next year's budget underneath 113 million, 242,000, an increase of 1.7, a little bit more than 1.7 million dollars, and that's a 1.59% budget to budget increase. Budget drivers, these are the, this is the slide that we have showed in prior years and the drivers that, that lead to the development of any budget. We adjusted them a little bit for COVID times in light of the pandemic. Well, we, we did more thinking about contingencies that might be necessary for next fall. And so we've included contingent funds in case social distancing is still a reality. And even though you know, we are on the verge of bringing all students back now, I still think it's wise to be prepared. Should we, we certainly hope things keep moving in the direction that they are. But should that change, we would, we would want to be best prepared to provide as best we can for our students. And in the event that we don't need the additional staffing for distancing, we have other plans for it, which I'll speak about momentarily. So here's a little bit more detail on that. So there's funding in this year's budget to be able to serve a greater number of students than we were able to this year, should we still be in a distanced environment. And if we're not in a distance environment, we think it's very important that we not just continue school as if nothing ever happened, but that we be very intentional and thoughtful about supporting our students as we emerge from the pandemic and be mindful of the experiences they've had in the last year and that we should have resources prepared to help them as we move forward into what we hope becomes a more at a learning environment more as it used to be. But recognizing they're, they're going to need to adjust and going to need all, all different types of supports to move through that. So this budget supports those things. The, the even the professional learning that's supported by the budget also is, is very much intended to support the need to take stock of this past year. We did a lot of things very quickly last March and April and May and put pieces in place at a much faster pace than we typically would. You can see technology right at the top there. These things are not in a priority order, by the way, but certainly, technology was one of the most significant changes that we made very rapidly. And we simply don't want to move forward assuming that things we did quickly are necessarily the way that things should continue. So a lot of the professional learning will be reflection. We have some important work to do in areas of science. As we move forward, some of that work got put on pause a little bit due to COVID and now we'll move forward. We want to make sure that we're supporting all learners as best we can. You see our special education population there and RTI services and E and L services. We're going to be continuing our work around race equity and inclusion and social emotional learning has become a very important part of what we do. Class size enrollment and supporting program, always a really important part of the budget. This budget supports an additional school psychologist to serve as CSC chairperson. It also supports staffing that supports favorable class sizes and the elective offerings that we think are so important here at the high school and contingency positions that allow us to support favorable class sizes, should there be changes, unexpected changes in enrollment or in choices that students make. A number of infrastructure projects here are supported by the budget. Some of these programs that either you, the board and community have seen before, but may have been delayed due to the need to invest in more COVID-related upgrades in the last year. And in some cases, expedite work that was on, on track to happen over a number of years having more quickly in the last year so that we could be best prepared around issues of ventilation and other things like that. So you see here, some of the work that was on the slide a year ago, but also some new upgrades and some ongoing important maintenance and upgrades that will be necessary and supported by this budget. Now we just look at enrollments and we said, we've said before, these, these slides are a bit different than they've been in the past specifically because of COVID. So we've never, for example, shown you a remote learning slide. These are those entirely remote sections at the elementary schools that I spoke about a few minutes ago. We, well, it's too soon to say for next fall whether we'll need to have remote learning sections again or not. It's, it's certainly possible, but we're not showing here a projection. This slide is really here tonight in order to help people understand what follows in terms of the enrollment at the other schools. But you can, the board can see here that while we had 133 students in October, that grew to about 150 students in the remote sections by February. And now I think we are, we are seeing that number. We anticipate that number coming down as we move back to in-person learning. Here's the, the kindergarten enrollment that we project for next year. We always pull this out from the schools. You can see we're projecting a very small increase in kindergarten enrollment for next year, but very difficult to project that accurately. And then here's where the slides really do start to look a little bit different than they have in the past. So here's the increased Miller population. What's different here is that the numbers in this column under October 2020 are missing those students who have gone remote for the year. And those are reflected down here in the 66. And this, and the number of sections also reflect the fact that some teachers came out of teaching in person and went to teach remote. So where you can see the total population down here at the bottom is very similar from this year to next year, but the number of sections is quite a bit different. And that's explained entirely by those remote sections. So next year, all 385 shown here at the bottom are reflected in the numbers at the top. Whereas this year, the 388 are only reflected when you include the 66 remote students. So I hope that explains what otherwise might look like a discrepancy to people. And again, we're not at this time making any kind of projections yet about the numbers here on the furthest to the right column, because again, we don't know if there may be families who choose to keep their children in a remote environment next year. So same kind of thing at all three elementary schools, there's a remote number at the bottom. And you can actually see what you, what you can see here is that both in Katona and Metropan, the numbers of students who went remote were a little bit smaller than it increased. And that's one of the reasons why the sections don't change so much in those schools. But again, all the schools have the sections that they need for next year. Well-supported by the budget that we've proposed. You can see a middle school gets a little larger next year. And you can see that where sixth grade was the smaller grade this year is growing and will have 10 sections rather than eight, and then seventh grade flips that next year. But again, we feel confident that we have the staffing and the sections that we need. And high school again, very small decrease at the high school next year. And favorable class size numbers there. Staffing.
Changes. Feels weird not to have the clicker. So here's the summary of the positions that are mostly classroom related and also the psychologist position. So you see, we're projecting mostly partial decreases in different subjects. This could change as students are finalizing schedules and as the master schedule is built. And it also includes the additional psychologist that Andrew referenced for an overall decrease of about 2.8 FTE. Those changes do all impact people. On this slide, the top portion where you looked at the nine and a quarter reductions in support staff, this is all through attrition. So these are people who either already retired or have announced their retirement. And then you see the two taken together, it's just over 12 positions that are being reduced in the budget for next year. This doesn't include anything around the contingency possessions that might be utilized. I think that's it for staffing, Andrew.
Thank you, Alice. And now we're going to move into the budget analysis and Denell is going to join us.
So the next few slides will go over budget to budget, tax cap, tax levy and tax rates. So this is just a review from the slide that Andrew mentioned before. We have a $1,770,200 increase or 1.59 budget to budget increase from prior year. Budget history. This slide shows nine prior years plus the upcoming 21, 22 school year. If you, it's, if you look at 12, 13 and 13, 14, you'll see that our tax levy is still below what it was in 12, 13 and 13, 14, and our budget is below what it was in 13, 14. So I thought that was an interesting fact to share. The next slide will walk us through some of our budget increases. So I mentioned before that our increases a little over 1.7 million. This slide represents 2,22,441 dollars of increases and it will be offset by some decreases. I'll show you in the next slide. But salary and benefits represent a 1.8 million dollar increase in budget to budget. And then operations, maintenance and pupil services and instructions and curriculum and professional development have slight increases. On the next slide, we'll, we'll see where our budget reductions are. So interfund transfers that are, that is our transfer to capital projects, those infrastructure projects that Andrew spoke about before. And then thanks to the due diligence of our building level administrators, they were able to look at some instructional supplies and reduce that by about 43,000. So this budget reduction of 343,000 offsets those budget increases we saw on the previous slide. So those two, two slides combined represent 1,679,020 dollars of the increases and the remaining increases to get us at that 1.77 million are spread throughout different budget codes in the, in, in the budget. So next, I wanted to speak to you about the tax levy. We do operate under a tax cap calculation. Just a reminder, it's not a 2% tax cap, it's 2% or CPI, whichever is lower. For 2020, the Consumer Price Index was 1.23%. And then another factor that we use in the calculation is called an assessment growth factor. And that is 1.0108 or 1.08%. So the next slide walks us through our tax levy limit. What we do is we take our current year or when you're thinking in 21, 22 terms, it's prior year tax levies. So our tax levy was 97 million, 948,497. Prior year tax levies. So our tax levy was ninety seven million, nine forty eight, four ninety seven. And then we multiply that by that tax based growth factor. So that's actually our growth, our assessment growth that we'll see on the assessment rolls. In July, that gets us to ninety nine million, six four, six thousand, three hundred and forty one thousand or one million, fifty seven thousand, eight forty four increase. The state does allow us to take out some exemptions for debt service and building and transfer aid, transportation aid for the current year. That's for the current year. As we take that out of our calculation and then the next slide will put back in those exempt exemptions, but for the projected rates of twenty one, twenty two. So once we get, take those exemptions out, we multiply that by the allowable growth factor or that C P I of one point two three percent. And then new this year for us, but not new to the calculation is since we did not increase our tax levy last year, we had some carryover funds that we were permitted to. Put into this calculation. So the tax levy before we add back in those exclusions is ninety eight million, three hundred sixty thousand, two hundred and seven dollars. And that carries over to the next slide. So in the next slide, you'll see that ninety eight, three sixty two oh seven on the top, and then we. Were allowed to add back in those exemptions or those exclusions. But at the projected rate of twenty one, twenty two rates, and that's our debt service, capital expenditures, building aid and such. We add those back in and we get a tax limit. Of one hundred million, three twenty six, seven hundred and forty two dollars or. In other words, two million, three hundred seventy eight thousand, two hundred and forty five dollars over what our current tax levy. Is. So what does that number exactly mean? If you go to the next slide, Andrew. That's the maximum allowable tax levy that Katona can go out to the voters with. Having what's called a simple majority vote, which is a fifty percent pass plus one vote. What we're presenting in our proposed revenue budget is. Is a one million, seven hundred fifty one thousand, eight hundred and ninety seven dollar increase. So that's six hundred and twenty six thousand, three hundred and forty eight dollars lower than the allowable limit. Just for reference, if the, if we did want to go over that tax levy, uh, limit of a hundred million, three twenty six. We would need what's called a super majority or a sixty percent vote. We are allowed to go out to vote. Twice to the taxpayers at both times that those. It fails, we are, we do operate on what's called a contingency budget and there's certain contingent budget codes that come out of the, of the budget. On the next slide, you'll see our projected revenue. I know we spoke at length last board meeting about how the state aid, state and federal stimulus packages would affect. Our tax levy, but it seems. Almost on a daily basis, we're getting different reports from the state and of course, the state hasn't finalized their budget. It's still on the legislative floor. So this slide is what we showed to, to the board back in February. The board will set the tax levy at the end of July. So of course, if we were to get increased state and federal aid. That would impact the property tax, but currently the property tax is set to increase about one point seven nine percent. One of the other calculations we use for tax levy calculation is we look at all of our other revenue sources that were listed on the previous page. We subtract that out. There, we have a very limited source of revenue stream that we can have. So. We, when you take out the appropriation fund balance and reserves and our other sources of revenue. That totals our, our balanced budget of one hundred thirteen million, two hundred forty two thousand, eight eighty. And you can see that the tax levy on that slide. So our tax rate. I can't stress enough that our tax rates are tied to assessed values and the assessed values are not finalized. Until, until, until July. So on the next slide, you can see our projected tax rates. Based on that, the one point seven nine increase that was presented in February. So Bedford would be up about a nine dollars and forty seven cents per one thousand of assessed value. Lewis Borough would have a slight decrease of fourteen seven, fourteen cents per a thousand dollars of assessed value. On the next slide, we'll see a summary of North Salem and Pound Ridge's rates throughout the year. North Salem is projected a dollar twenty three to per one thousand of assessed value and Pound Ridge is thirty seven cents. Decrease per one thousand of assessed value. And with that, I think Andrew, you take over with this line.
Thank you, Danelle. So we just have a summary here that again says that we think that the budget proposed to the board tonight. Allows us to emerge from what has been this incredibly challenging year. There are still a number of unknowns ahead, including what Danelle was just mentioning there about the state aid. We're all eager to see what actually comes from New York State. Once it processes the federal aid that it's now. Figuring out, figure it out its own state budget. As well as, of course, unknowns having to do with the virus and we all hope for the best and that things only continue to improve. This budget, we think supports a number of different contingencies and has us ready to support our students and our staff very well next year, regardless of the conditions. And it also allows us to reflect on and learn from this challenging year that we are just coming through. The propositions, the proposition number one is always the proposition about the budget itself that allows us to levy the taxes required. In order to fund this budget. Proposition number two is the bus replacement proposition, and we always stress the fact that this is not a request for new or additional funds. This is a request to transfer funds that already exist in this year's budget in the twenty twenty one budget. And to transfer them into lines so that we can purchase these buses in order to replace buses and other vehicles that are in most cases. Beginning to exceed the mileage and, and, and getting, becoming in danger of not passing Department of Transportation inspections. And so we hope to replace those vehicles. And with that, we've come through most of the dates on here. We're up to the twenty fifth with what we hope will be the board's adoption of our budget tonight. On May sixth, that's a required public budget hearing. We'll go through the slides one more time. Within that timeframe of the vote itself, and the vote will take place on May eighteenth this year. You'll remember that last year it was conducted entirely by absentee ballot. This year we anticipate that we'll be back. To in-person voting, but absentee ballots will still be available for those who request them. And then finally, we now have the dates of our budget roadshows that are supported by our P T O. I suspect that this year they will still be, they'll be virtual. On the dates and times shown for each of these schools. So watch for the information about how to attend those meetings. And there's our ad for the budget vote and the Board of Education election on May eighteenth. With that, we come to the end. Of our review of the budget and we're happy to take any questions and we submit this board, this budget to the board for your anticipated adoption this evening. Thank you all.
Thank you all. We really appreciate the opportunity to review the budget again tonight. And thank you again to everyone at the. Virtual table and to all of our administrators, building leaders, directors, teachers, staff members. We know this is always a collaborative effort. And especially in a year. As challenging as this one, we feel very fortunate to have. Just the opportunity to ask you thoughtful questions over a long period of time. We were early in our initial review of the budget. I think we were out ahead before most districts in Westchester. Other districts are now starting to report their anticipated. Budget increases or tax levy increases. We are grateful to you for doing everything. With prudence to ensure that we can account for contingencies and that this budget allows for flexibility. Depending on. How we emerge from the pandemic in the fall and the options that are available to us, for example, to continue virtual learning. But also while remaining. Fiscally prudent and ensuring that we keep our budget to budget increase as low as we possibly can. So thank you for your. Judicious oversight of our resources. We really appreciate that very much. And with that, I'm going to pause. I'm not sure whether board members tonight have any. Questions. I know we've had opportunities throughout the months of February and March to ask. Questions. We've had many questions asked and answered. We appreciate also that we've had the opportunity for community members to join us at these meetings and ask questions. And. Again, I'll just pause if board members wanted to comment or ask questions here.
Marjorie, I just, at the risk of maybe repeating some of what you said. I would just like to commend the administration and all those involved in preparing this budget. There were many, many questions over the last. Four weeks or more since we first saw the budget and I think all of those have been satisfied and addressed. I think to start the budget process off with a review of the board's goals and in particular, goal number two is, is very, very appropriate. And we are all here, one of our primary roles as board members is to operate the district in a financially responsible way. And I think this budget does just that. In a time that's been really remarkably complicated and difficult and burdensome on all of the administration and staff. To be able to navigate that and to project to next year what we might see in very uncertain times. Your ability to do that and to build contingency into the budget, I think is really. Was way beyond anything I or any of the board members could have done. So we really do appreciate all the, all the deep thought and effort that went into all of that. To be able to prepare for a socially distanced environment and, and still have contingencies, given that we don't know what next year will look like, I think is remarkable. I'm also happy to see that we are planning to do some of the projects that we sort of put off because of all of the scrambling that we had to do this year. The bleachers project, the fields at the middle school. But perhaps in particular, the, the renewable energy work that's going on as well as the, the small electric vehicle infrastructure piece that we're going, we're planning to do. And to do all of that and come in at about, I think, six hundred and seventy thousand, you said, Danelle, below the allowable. Tax levy is, is really remarkable. And so I just wanted to congratulate and commend all of you. I think it's a very, very responsible budget. So thank you.
Thank you, Rory. Nobody else is waiting to make a comment or to ask a clarifying question, then our next item of business is to. Vote on a resolution to adopt the superintendent's proposed budget, which will make it the Board of Education's budget. So I think this brings us to seven point oh two. And I will make a motion. To move this resolution. If I could ask somebody to please second it. Seconded by Bill, thank you. And if there's no further discussion, I'll just read that be it resolved that. This proposition be placed on the ballot at the May eighteenth, twenty twenty one annual meeting of qualified voters of the Katona Lewis Borough Union Free School District. That the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two budget. Required for school purposes and estimated direct expenses for our ensuing year. Be placed in the amount of one hundred and thirteen million, two hundred and forty two thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. And if I can, if that's sufficient, Kim, may I ask for a vote? Okay, terrific. Then all in favor, please say aye. And I think that's six zero. Wonderful. Thank you very much. And that brings us to seven point oh three, which is our opportunity to vote on a resolution for placement of the. Bus proposition on the ballot. And just a reminder that this is a request to utilize existing funds and Danelle will correct me if I'm wrong. But asking our taxpayers to allow us to utilize existing funds and to transfer funds from the general fund to. The capital fund in order to continue with our bus replacement cycle and keep our students as safe as possible when they are transported to and from our schools. And to and from other extracurricular events and competitions and activities which we look forward to resuming in the fall. So I will move resolution seven point oh three and ask for a second, please. Seconded by Rory, I'm sorry, seconded by Julia. I heard your voice and saw Rory's hand, pardon me. And any further discussion on this? I'll just go ahead and read it briefly. Be it resolved that this proposition be placed on the ballot at the May eighteenth, twenty twenty one annual meeting of qualified voters of the Katona Lewis Borough Union Free School District. To read essentially that the Board of Education is authorized to purchase and pay for three sixty six passenger buses and or a similar sized substitute. Two thirty passenger buses and or a similar sized substitute. And two thirty four passenger buses and or a similar sized substitute. And in addition, one operations and maintenance vehicle at a cost of fifty seven thousand dollars for a total cost of all of those. Buses and operations and maintenance vehicle not to exceed six hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. And again, this is money that would be transferred from current funds available within the general fund to our capital funds. And be it further resolved that the district clerk is directed to take all necessary action to effectuate the placement of this proposition and the former proposition on the ballot. May eighteenth, annual meeting of qualified voters for Katona Lewis Borough. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye. Wonderful. Thank you so much. Six zero and congratulations, Andrew. Congratulations to our students and our community. We really feel. Proud and again, very grateful to you for this budget. So many, many thanks to all who were involved. And helping us get over this finish line in anticipation of the next finish line. Thank you. Thank you. And I think that brings us to public forum. So I will pause. And when you're ready, Kim, if you could please. Help us to know whether any comments have come into our public forum email account or if anybody's waiting to ask a question tonight.
Thank you, Marjorie. At this time, there have been no emails submitted for public forum. And I do not see any Q and A comments submitted for public forum tonight.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And thank you again for members of the community just for joining us tonight and for your. Participation, just by your presence. And that brings us to our consent agenda. So we're at ten point oh one now, and I'm not aware of any consent agenda items that board members wanted to vote on separately, but I'll just pause to be sure that's the case. And if it is the case, then would somebody like to move the consent agenda? Thank you. Thank you, Liz. Moved by Liz and it looks like seconded by Julia. Thank you. And any discussion or comments, questions? Okay, then we can vote on the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Six zero, thank you. Just bear with me for one moment. I think that brings us to board dialogue. And discussion, item fourteen. Do any board members have additional topics or comments tonight? Thoughts? Andrew, anybody from our administrative team? Okay, we've met a lot in March, so maybe we've talked about most of what there is to talk about. And everybody's looking ahead to spring break. Happy spring and hoping everybody will have a nice respite. And I think with that, we can. Look ahead to future meetings. So now we're at fifteen point oh one. And let's see, the Board of Education is going to next meet Thursday, April eighth at seven thirty P M. And we'll then meet again Tuesday, April twentieth at seven thirty P M. And that's our opportunity to adopt the Bosse's budget. That's why we're meeting on a Tuesday. All component districts throughout the region will be meeting on Tuesday that same night. And I think that's it for the board meeting in the month of April. And in terms of subcommittee meetings, looks like policies meeting tomorrow morning at nine A M. Okay. And then after we come back from the break, finance committee will meet. Tuesday, April thirteenth, seven o'clock. Sustainability Friday, April sixteenth, eight fifteen in the morning. Policy meeting again Friday, April twenty third at nine A M. Audit April twenty sixth at seven P M. And then policy one more time Friday, April thirtieth at nine A M. Okay. And that brings us to our opportunity to adjourn. Would somebody like to make a motion? Moved by Rory, seconded by Julia. Again, we hope everybody has a meaningful respite, meaningful holiday if you're celebrating. We thank you so much for all that we were able to accomplish in the past couple of months with respect to the budget and. Moreover, with respect to everything that you're doing to keep our students engaged in their hybrid models, their virtual models. And plan for a more full reopening for our students. Thank you. Alright, so we need to vote, vote to adjourn, all in favor.
Hi.
Aye.
Aye.
Six zero. Thank you so much, everybody. Six zero. Thank you so much, everybody. Have a good evening. Bye-bye. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Aye.